We are delighted to welcome tonight the Fairview Beach Baptist Church Boy Scout Troop 179, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We will be led in invocation by Councilor Matthew J. Kelly, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So after the invocation, will you, the Boy Scouts, please come forward to lead us? And will everyone please stand?
Most merciful Father, please bring peace to those in distress, comfort to those in pain. Bring our men and women in uniform, both home and abroad, safely home to their families. Help us make decisions that benefit the entire Fredericksburg community, and always do mind us that we are here to serve and not be served. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do not have a presentation or a public hearing tonight. And we have no speakers signed up to speak. So we will go straight to the council agenda. Does any counselor wish to add anything to the council agenda? In that case, I will call upon Vice Mayor Withers for Item 7A, Payment of City Utility and Tax Bills by Furloughed Federal Government Employees.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't think it's any secret that we have some residents in Fredericksburg who are government employees and affected by simply not being paid, either on furlough or while they're working. So I've talked to Ms. Wood, our City Treasurer, and to city staff about the possibility of some relief for those workers while they are not being paid. Culmination of that is Mr. Whitley and Ms. Wood are going to explain what we are trying to do now and what we can possibly do going forward. So, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Whitley, if you will start this off and turn it over to Ms. Wood when you're done, we can go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whitley?
Thank you.
Oh, Counselor Graham, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to state before the discussion began that I am a member of a business profession, occupation, or group of three or more members affected by the shutdown, namely, I'm an employee of Booze Allen Hamilton, a federal contractor that has been affected by the government shutdown and directly does business with the federal government. And so, to prevent any conflicts of interest, I will be abstaining from any discussion and subsequent votes regarding this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Graham. Duly noted. Now, Mr. Whitley.
Okay. Thank you. And I appreciate Ms. Wood, our Treasurer here tonight, and she was working on this with us. As we studied the issue, there are two separate issues that are raised in the question of can we work with folks on some of these outstanding bills? So I'll take them sort of in two chunks. The first one would be taxation, which is governed by Chapter 70 of our city code. And under taxation, we have some bills that have gone out for personal property taxes as a supplemental. So these are not the main real estate bills that went out in the fall or are going to come out in the spring that were due in November or May, nor the personal property bills that are the main bills that folks are used to. But these are supplemental bills that have been sent out, and I think there are about 1,800 bills that have gone out. Under our code, the Commissioner and the Treasurer can waive penalties and interest under a variety of circumstances. Most of these are things like someone had a death in the family, or maybe there was a fire that destroyed records, or things that are kind of outside the control of the taxpayers, and this would sort of be, would sort of fall into that sort of thing. One of the things that they are, that either the Treasurer or the Commissioner is allowed to consider is a request by the City Manager or his designee to abate penalties and interest for particular payments as being in the best interests of the city, which is fairly broad. And we were prepared to, as council discussed this issue, take that direction from City Council and provide just that recommendation to the Commissioner, or actually the Treasurer in this case. So the Treasurer could then use that and postpone the payments. Our recommendations, we've sort of thought through the issue, but we're happy to take other discussion, would be to go ahead and just postpone the payments that we're discussing tonight. About 1,800 bills will be due January 31st, and our recommendation will be just postpone it until February 28th. So that would be, and for everybody, and not try to get into who's a federal employee, who's a federal contractor, who might work for a federal contractor, restaurant owners might be impacted, et cetera, et cetera. So just go ahead and provide relief to everybody and give another 30 days for the payment of the supplemental personal property bills. So that's the taxation piece. The utilities piece is a little different. Under the Utilities Code, the City Treasurer has authority today to extend service cutoffs. So people can't pay their water bill, can't pay their sewer bill, can't pay their garbage bill because they're furloughed, no checks coming in. The City Treasurer, right now, can extend their cutoff date. And that authority is in the code right now. This is Section 74 of our city code. The penalties and interest are a little different. The penalty is 10% of the balance owed. And the code is very specific about it's due, well, it's due and payable upon receipt of a bill, but any bill not paid by the first business day after the 25th day of the month is assessed a penalty and a 10% penalty assessed. If council was interested in amending that, and we're happy to hear the discussion about that, that would require an ordinance, and we could bring that back and prepare it February 12th. And that would probably be some sort of temporary suspension of this section of code. And hopefully, the situation will be resolved by then, but that might be hopeful. So that's the deep background. I'm happy to recognize Ms. Wood. Thank her for assistance with this, and please feel free to correct or amend anything or provide any commentary that I would have. And I think both of us, and the City Attorney as well, are happy to answer any questions Council may have.
Right. Ms. Wood, thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it, and we know the Treasurer's Office is working with people as they approach you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we are. We've had a few inquiries already, and mostly just that inquiries, not specific requests for payment plans, but they have mentioned that they're on furlough and what are we going to do. I've advised my staff to just take each situation as it comes in and treat it however it needs to be treated, which we would do anyway for any citizen that was in need. Mark did, or Mr. Whitley did mention that the next council meeting is on the 12th of February, and if there's an ordinance change necessary. I would also like to mention that is the next cutoff date for this group of folks, so that might kind of bump against each other there. But I am on the same page as we discussed earlier today, and will certainly do whatever it is that council directs me to.
Bless you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Council Vice Mayor Withers?
Well, I would just like to thank Ms. Wood for, on such short notice, of course, we were closed yesterday, and for working with me today and to try to figure something, and of course, Mr. Whitley and the Manager's Office. I would certainly hope that we would, I think the easiest thing to do on the tax bill is to extend the all rather than to have people having to come in and show identification. I think that would be a burden on, I can't see it costing the city a lot of money just deferring a bill for 20, it would only be 28 days because February 28th is the last day. I'm kind of hung up on the ordinance. I just hate to see us have to put a penalty on people who are not working through no fault of their own, or who are not being paid through no fault of their own. What I would like to do is, I would suggest, and I'm not firm on this, I would suggest that maybe we ask staff to do an ordinance with the Sunset Clause to be brought back before us for the February meeting. Hopefully, we won't need to implement that, but it'd be written in such a way that it would be until the end of the shutdown, and then it would automatically go back. You know, I don't know the legal aspect of that, but I would think that that might, yeah, I don't think, Ms. Wood, I don't know whether you're comfortable with that or not, and if you're not, I would appreciate your comments on it, because, you know, you are the person that has to implement this, and it's easy for me to talk about what we should do, but the application is something different. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well, as far as implementation is concerned, I think, I mean, it would be a little bit of manual work on our office by withdrawing those who are requesting the assistance, but I think we could handle it. So if that's the direction that you want to move in, I would support that.
Well, as to the extension, the 28-day extension, what is necessary, Mr. Whitley, from the council? Is anything else there?
Management can do that.
Management can do that?
Yeah.
Management has the ability to do that. If council wanted to have a motion to support that or direct us to look at that, that would certainly be appropriate as well.
That would be all that would be necessary from council. The ordinance is a different matter, because it has to be prepared and considered, and we also have that time consideration, because you said the 12th is actually the cutoff date.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. But you have the ability to...
Systematically, we can handle them, prevent, or prevent them from being cut off.
Yes, exactly. You have the ability to do that. Okay. So does council understand the situation, and I'll call on you, Counselor Devine.
Yeah, no, first of all, thank you, Mr. Withers, for bringing this forward, and thank you, Ms. Wood and staff. I certainly support this, and my only concern is that I don't want people to get cut off, and I also want to make sure people know that this is an option that is available to them. And so I just want to make sure that we, in some way, through website, or, you know, whatever avenues we have, that we do notify people that that is an option. I know that places an extra burden on your office, but I know that your office is always good to respond, so...
We're happy to help.
So, yeah, but my only concern is timing, to make sure people aren't cut off, and that fees are not, you know, that we are not penalizing people for that. I think there are a lot of people who are trying to take out short-term loans and other things that are going to involve fees and living on credit, and I just would hate to add to that burden.
Thank you. Counselor Duffy, and then Counselor Kelly.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, everyone, for working on this problem. I have one concern, is I don't know even if the government does reopen, how soon people would get paid, and so, you know, that's a concern too. So I do worry about the length of this. I think we need to be realistic, but these immediate steps seem to be, you know, the least that we need to do. Thanks.
Counselor Kelly?
I just want to make sure I'm clear on one thing, and a general question from Ms. Wood. So right now, you have the authority to defer the payments, we just do not have the authority to, or you don't have the authority to basically say, do away with the penalty.
I don't have that authority.
Correct, but you can defer, so the real issue here is the penalty. So for the public to understand, this is obviously, other than the scale of this potentially, this is not an issue you are unfamiliar with, that you do have people on a regular basis that have been calling you, asking, and that we, as a city, have always tried to accommodate as much as we possibly can.
Yes.
So I think, if we just need to get it cleared up. So, no, I have no issues of moving forward with something and coming back to us at the next meeting. I will assume, again, anybody asks, and they're going to get the deferral, the issue would be whether or not they'll go end up paying the penalty on that and moving the bill back for everybody. Makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Frye?
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. Thank you, Vice Mayor Withers, for bringing this up, and thank you, Mrs. Wood, and everybody involved, you know, in this conversation. I just want to say, it makes me feel good to sit here, you know, to know that, you know, when folks are in need, you know, that us as a city can do something by working together to help, you know, the average Joe, the average citizen out. That's what we're here for, and this is big, because people have issues all the time. A lot of the issues that I try to help people with is not necessarily this, but it relates to things like this. So, yeah, I just think this is a huge step in for, pretty much, in a sense, the whole city is getting a pass, you know, on what's going on in DC. And I never agree in bashing government and so on and so forth. We're a local government, of course, but I think it's only fitting that we do what we can here as the city, you know, the city of George Washington, the first president, you know, and on the reality, I'm not bashing our current president, but to, we're from Fredericksburg, and that's who we are. And we're dealing with issues of the current president, and you can debate me or whatever the case if you want, I'm not trying to take anything to a negative state, but, you know, it feels good to be sitting in the spot where the first president is from, to be taking care of something that the current president is making happen. And, you know, to each his own on who you like and your political views, but for us as the representatives of the city of Fredericksburg, you know, we don't claim Republican or Democrat, and we don't have to, but we're coming together, and it's a beautiful thing, so that's all I have to say. And thank you again, Mrs. Wood.
You're welcome. Thank you. Do we, Vice Mayor Withers?
I'd like to make a motion that we give the City Manager authority to extend the pay period for the real estate tax, personal property tax, excuse me, supplement. I don't think we need a motion on the ordinance. Can we just request that they come back for the, okay, so...
Back with what's approved or incorporate our needs.
Motion will just be for the extension, then, the City Manager's Office to do it.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Please cast your votes.
Vice Mayor Withers?
Motion passes 6-0.
With one abstention.
Yeah. And I would like to request that the staff come forward with a motion, with the ordinance, with Sunset Clause tied to the end of the, I'm not sure whether we should say the end of the pay period or the end of the, to cover when these employees will get paid, so whatever that is.
Whatever that is.
And I think, as far, going back to the first motion, as we move forward in February, if we see that this thing is not settled, we can, of course, do something different at that time. Okay. Thank you, thanks everyone for their help in this, it's really, really appreciated.
Well, thank you, Ms. Wood, and all of your staff. We do appreciate the extra effort that they won't be going to...
I'll extend that to them.
As always.
Thank you.
Okay. Officer Mero, thank you for being with us this evening. Before we consider the consent agenda, first of all, does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Move consent agenda as submitted.
Oh, wait a minute.
Yep.
I got a call on Counselors Duffy and Frye for disclosures.
Thank you. I'd like to make a disclosure about Items 8A and 8E involving school funds, the school grants funds in Item 8A, and the school grants fund in Item 8E, that I am Assistant Principal of James Royal High School, and I can participate in these resolutions fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Thank you. Counselor Frye?
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw, and my disclosure on the same items, consent agenda item A and E, my disclosure is my spouse is an employee of the Fredericksburg Public School System. I am able to participate in this transaction fairly objectively and in the public interest. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, Counselor Kelly for the motion.
Okay, the motion stands, but I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
Because I can make the disclosure.
Sorry. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 7-0.
We have before us two sets of minutes for the January 8th public hearing and the January 8th regular session. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move approval of minutes as submitted.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 7-0.
We have a couple of appointments to boards and commissions. The first is an appointment to the Policy Board for the Rappahannock Area Alcohol Safety Action Program.
Madam Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I move approval of the appointment to the Policy Board for the Rappahannock Area Alcohol Safety Action Program, Mr. Andrew Cornick.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 7-0.
And an appointment to the Memorials Advisory Commission.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of Pauline Felder to the Memorials Advisory Commission.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. Item 11B, I will call upon Director Parks, Rec., and Special Events, Mrs. Shellhorse.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of council. Me again. This is all about, this is looking to, it's the first read for amending the Special Events Ordinance to provide for a tiered structure for event applications and to clarify the effect of the issuance of a special event permit. So again, in 2018, Fredericksburg Main Street, in partnership with the city, hired a Main Street Center to advise on the management of special events downtown. Among the Main Street consultants, draft recommendations is to provide more time for city review of applications for the special event, for special events in the city. They want to do a tiered, they recommended a tiered approach, which we're bringing as part of this ordinance change, for residential block parties to be 30 days, 30-day applications, special events with no temporary street closures, to move it to 60 days, special events with street closures would be 120 days, and major events would be 120 days. Spontaneous events are actually included as 48 hours, but that can be waived by the City Manager. But in general, it's supposed to be, we're asking for 48 hours, and that's what would be included in this ordinance.
Counselor Duffy?
Yes, I just want to add my thanks to the group who put so much of this together, you know, the Special Events Committee, this task force that included Captain Layton, Kimberly Herbert, and representatives from the police, fire, public works, building code officials, and, you know, everyone. These kinds of things are what is kind of the lifeblood of the culture of the city, and I appreciate you attempting to rationalize these to make us be able to serve the public better. So I appreciate all the work done on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Devine?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to express my gratitude and say that the city logged 265 events last year, and that's a tremendous amount. I mean, that means there's 100 more days, so I don't know. Come on, you can fill them. But, no, but 265 events for a city of our size, I think, is a tremendous accomplishment. And so kudos to your staff and, you know, everybody in the city who pulls together to make events happen, but it really does mean a lot to our city, and it means a lot to not only the residents who are here, to their enjoyment, but we do bring people to the city, and we want people to come and enjoy our city, and this really gives people an avenue and an invitation to come to our city. So thank you for all the work that's gone into this, and, again, it just, it hopefully means that events even run even that much more smoothly. So with that, I would move on first read to support the ordinance amending the Special Events, the Special Events Ordinance to provide for a tiered structure for event applications and to clarify the effect of the issuance of a special events permit.
Second.
Any further discussion? Vice Mayor Withers?
Yeah, I'd just like to say to the public that we had a work session on this, and of course, this information is going to be posted on the website. For those folks who normally do events, it's easy to go find what you need to do, and some changes that have been made. So, thank you.
Again, thank you for all the hard work on this, and I don't think people realize how much work it takes of the Police Department, the Public Works Department, and the Parks and Rec. Department to have an event that might have 100 or 200 people, or for that matter, a hike, or a walking event, or a running event that involves fewer. You're talking about closures of streets, you're talking about maintaining the safety of everyone involved, but at the same time, as Counsel Devine said, it's the lifeblood of our town and our community, and one of the things that makes it a great place to live, that there are fun things to do. So thank you very much. And with that, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Item 11B, I'll call on Budget Manager, Ms. Jett.
Good evening. Today, council's asked to approve a budget amendment for the use of contingency in the General Fund for Storm Damage. Council's asked to appropriate approximately $83,640 for repairs and cleanup related to storm damage. This covers two storm events that caused damage at Old Mill Park and Mott's Run. The first, although it occurred at the end of June, there was a great deal of cleanup the first few days of July, and the second was related to storm damage caused by Hurricane Florence in September. And this appropriation is needed to ensure that Parks, Rec., and Events has adequate resources to carry out the department's mission and function. Only one read is required, and staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Ms. Jett? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve resolution for fiscal year 2019, the budget amendment for use of contingency in the General Fund for Storm Damage.
Second.
Thank you. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
I did mean to make a comment, and I'll take the chairman's prerogative, ability to do so. I was going to say, I would like to note for the public certification that in when these repairs were made, consideration was given to ensuring that there would be less damage in a future flood. You know, things were elevated, things were raised, wiring was improved in such a way that it anticipated future flood and less damage from future floods. Thank you. I'll call upon Mr. Buridi for the City Manager's update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of quick highlights for mine, folks, that Restaurant Week is now underway. Please participate through January 27th at numerous downtown restaurants. You can find out more information at www.fredicksburgrestaurantweek.com. So please join us. We still have ample parking downtown all during the week, and especially on the weekends where we've got availability in the parking deck, and obviously, those first three hours are free. So we do encourage folks to come downtown and have dinner and shop and find ample parking. There's a lot to be done in the city. And on that note, I'll highlight the fact that Parks Department is doing their part in attracting folks downtown. They've got snowball fights coming Saturday, January 26th. Yes, you heard it here, snowball fights, with or without actual real snow. They're going to have a snowball fight at Hurcan Park. It'll be a great kid-friendly event, 3:00 PM to 4:30 PM, again, on Saturday, January 26th. Also highlight that at Dorothy Hart Center on February 1st, we're having, again, the Fourth Annual Father-Daughter Dance, again, at Dorothy Hart on February 1st. Find out more information from the Parks Department. Also highlight the good work of the Police Department. They have collected 248 pounds of old prescription drugs at their drug disposal box. So you can find that availability for that box to dispose of prescription drugs you're not using at the Police Department, Monday through Friday, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. So please take advantage of that offering to get prescription drugs in their proper place. I'll also commend the Police Chief for allowing new recruits and officers to have facial hair. I think it's perfectly appropriate. So thank you, thank you for the chief for getting a little more creative to obviously keep his workforce happy and motivated. Mr. Frye, Mr. Kelly has a little competition moving forward, I suppose. Lastly, I'll remind folks that we do have the DMV Connect, which is an offering that we were proud to achieve. They are here in the city once a month, at least at this point. The next time the DMV Select will be in place is February 7th. That'll be Executive Plaza on the fourth floor, so take advantage of those local services. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Your calendar's before you, I'd be happy to take any questions as well.
All right. We have a motion to go into closed session?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, if I may? The closed session is only on the topic of Liberty Place. Mr. Duffy, you'll see...
Take that off.
Yeah, and the confidential technology.
Yeah, and confidential technology. That is not before council tonight.
Okay. So, I'll read that. I move that we proceed to closed meeting under the Code of Virginia 2.2-3711839 for discussion of confidential memoranda, working papers, and other information related to economic development, related to Liberty Place Project, where disclosure of the information would adversely affect the financial interests of the city of Fredericksburg.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 7-0.
We will return upstairs to the suite for our closed session. Thank you.